Follow me, all, please, to the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today is January 26th. Can I have a roll call?
Cleary?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Caparros?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Waylon?
Here.
Approval of the previous meetings, there is December 8th, January 12th, and January 14th. Are any additions, changes, dilutions?
I believe the agenda says two cents a minute, but actually three.
No, just a second. If not, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made, there's a second. Any questions in the motion?
I'm sorry, who said me?
You're my seat.
Okay.
Keel?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Roca?
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Is there anyone from the audience that we should address the board? If not, Finance Administration Committee, trustee clerk.
Let's get over at the speed. We're getting into the budgeting season, so we're starting to, we need to start scheduling our budgeting meetings. There's a lot of meetings we've got to go through. The finance group has determined the best time for us to meet is going to be February 28th, and that would be for the finance committee to go through with the village administrator and the village president to develop the initial balanced budget. After that, we will present it to the village board on the 23rd, and we're hoping that everybody has a chance to go through that before we go to the workshop, which will be on the following Monday, which would be the 30th. We meet in the village hall at 6 o'clock. And then after that, we'll have the final budget, which will then be prepared and then be submitted to the residents, to the residents for any comments, and that would be on the 27th of April for final adoption. So just want to let everybody know that's kind of the schedule we're proceeding in for the 2015-2016 budget. As part of that, since we are doing some things that are a little different, since it's not a standard board meeting, we're going to need to make some motions on different meetings. So I make a motion calling for a special meeting for the village board on Monday, the 30th, at 6 o'clock at the village hall to discuss the proposed budget for the fiscal year of 2015-2016.
Second.
Is a motion on the floor, nor was a second? Any questions in motion?
Move each.
Good question to ask. Roca?
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary? Yes. Then after we get through that, we then have to have a public hearing, so I make a motion for a public hearing on Monday, April 27th, at 7 o'clock, on the proposed budget for the fiscal year of 2015-2016.
Second.
Is a motion on the floor, nor was a second? Any questions in that motion? Roca?
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Now, one of the things I talked about in the last few meetings was concerning the five-year plan. This is important for us to develop the profit budget. It goes out five years, but it gives us an idea of where we're going to be going. This is one of the reasons why we received a AA+ rating from Standards &amp; Poor. It is a five-year. It was modified in December and resubmitted to the trustees for their information. So I make a motion for resolution number...
2014-15.
...adopting the five-year financial plan for the fiscal year 2015 through 2019.
Second.
Motion on the floor, trustee Waylon, second. Any questions in motion? Roca?
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes. One of the things that came up late last year was the state passed a law that allowed reciprocal information concerning sales tax between the Illinois Department of Revenue and the municipalities, or non-home rule municipalities, which feature falls on you. So the ordinance would allow the village president and the clerk, the village administrator, and the treasurer of the village to acquire information from the state. This allows us to verify sales tax. And since we do a disbursement off of those with some of our agreements, it'd be good for us to have the accurate information. So I make a motion for ordinance number...
1220.
Authorizing the village president, the village clerk, to sign a reciprocal information sharing agreement with the Illinois Department of Revenue for sales tax gap.
Second.
Motion on the floor, a second? Any questions in motion? Roca?
Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. Another thing that happened over the last few weeks, our public work supervisor went out and picked up some military surplus that became aware by our police department, our police chief. In doing that, he put this on his own credit card to pull up a lot of this info. Really, it's more reimbursement for fuel and lodging. Payment, or the purchase of it, was, since it was surplus, it didn't cost the village anything, but it's valued up to $165,000 worth of military surplus tools. So I make a motion for the payment of $372.77 to Howard Cowan.
Motion on the floor, nor was a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Any questions in motion? Just a comment, as we had other arrangements, this wasn't going to work out this way, but when he got down to that area, our credit card company got suspicious and blocked it. So then he took it out of his own pocket, and then we had to reimburse him. So we tried to use other means.
Webb, Bob, Rich, or Moon?
Any questions in motion? Roca?
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Caparros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Cleary?
Yes. The one last thing concerning the budget, we are going to need to develop a compensation for nine million employees. I'd like to do that in closed session.
Get to the end of the meeting, bud. Public buildings and properties, parks and recreation, trustee Land.
Update on generators for the village facilities, Bob?
We have two generators we picked up in Detroit back in October. We've taken them in for analysis. One of the generators has been deemed 100% effective. That can be used in an application, no, it is not. We have not determined yet whether or not that second one can be repaired. If it can't, we will use it for spare parts for the first one, because both generators are identical. We also received a natural gas generator from the township highway department, and our plan is to put that one here and put the diesel generator at the PD. The diesel generator at PD will be a manual transfer switch. You'll have to manually start the generator and flip it over, because the military generator does not have electric ignition. This one here will, with one of that transfer switch, that allows to keep all the phone systems in the village up and running in the event the power goes out. It's going to take time. I don't know exactly when we'll be able to get these generators in place. We are applying for a grant through ComEd to pay for the one here. And we will put it in the budget tab. But it's probably something that won't happen till the summer of 2016.
Is the gas line large enough to support a 60 ton of heat?
We don't have that answer either yet. We have NIPOR looking into it. It's right on the line, right on the line. And that will have to be a cost of projects that we have to increase the budget. But that's where we are with the generator.
Yeah, ice rink update, the ring is open. Is the transfer switch already installed?
No.
That would also be something that purchases by the time. Okay, the ice rink is up and running. It's open. There's a fence, temporary fence installed around the ring. And that costs of being split with the village and the youth commission. The fire department also used it. Did they already use it for, like, the rescue on ice? So they've used that in their training. So that ends my report.
You just got to do any progress on the, getting all the groups together that'll use the park?
No, we're going to do that. It's next month.
For the board, we talked that it might be a good idea to have all the major groups that use the park sit down in a meeting and then talk to everybody back and forth for, like, scheduling, for not leaving anything behind for the next group that's coming along. What other things did we discuss?
Just scheduling, you know, different things like that.
All right, and that was, last week we talked about that. And unless that's organized, then you would have your committee there and talk with these groups as well.
Absolutely.
So that included what, the youth commission, Fourth of July commission, beach rec, soccer?
Yeah, I think the soccer and the beach rec were the main two, you know? So we'll get that going this, next month.
Any building and zoning interest here?
The building department monthly report was a close year review along with the building department annual reports was also a course. Or an update on the ferry crossing south retention pond maintenance. This has been an ongoing issue for several years. Subdivision has, was approved as a rezon without the annexation agreement since the land was already annexed to the village as an R1 in 1985 and remained prime ground for many years. The land was sold to the developer. Had to do, all he had to do was to take his plot and get it reported, and apparently he didn't do it, so. So right now, there's no covenants covering any of the lots to make it an HOA happen. Since that time, the land has been sold to four different developers, which is PD, Riker, Landover, and Slade. They go by, and now the property has been foreclosed in by the bank. Bank is trying to sell the lots, does not want to record any covenants, since this will hinder the sale of the property. And the funds due to a tax bill, which now will be up to someone else to pay the taxes. Village easement right requires that the land be used for drainage, so we're okay there. The problem is the maintaining of the pond. Village cannot currently legally compile anyone to maintain or mow the pond. The essential that the worst-case scenario is it would cost about $5,600 to maintain. We are working with the bank to get these to agree to place a covenants of 65 lots at $90 per year to provide cash flow for pond maintenance. If this does not work, village could essentially establish an SSA and conduct it as its own maintenance. The other scenario, which would be the last least favorable, is that village would just accept the deed to the pond and maintain it on its own. Village attorney is working on this matter and will keep us informed. Bob, can you tell me why it was never recorded?
Well, the plot of subdivision was recorded, but it was a straight annexation. So, I mean, it was a, it was a straight rezoning, so there was no annexation agreement, and there was no requirement that the village could make on developers to record covenants. The simple question was, you had R1 zoning already. You just wanted to file a plot of subdivision. And on the plot of subdivision, it says the pond shall be maintained by homeowners association. It's just that they never reported.
And there's only like 100 houses out there now?
Yeah. There's about 60 lots for sale up there yet. I think the discussion that we've had with the attorney, we're already trying to around the pond, which have no houses yet, except the houses that are already there on Orchard. We'll be included. So that's why we're suggesting, Bob's been trying to get this done for a long time. We called the attorney, and we finally gave him some direction, where at least do it now, when there's no houses on the lots, so that we don't have to deal with it down the road when the... But we're hoping that the attorney can convince the bank to just go ahead and do it, and then we don't have to do anything.
So this is only the pond that we're talking, we're not talking about the other grass that has to be cut, like, they've been used doing all this last summer? Or is it the whole, include the pond plus all the lots?
The pond is only, is only, that we're trying to get addressed in writing, so that the homeowners association have to deal with the pond. The vacant lots is a different subject, which then the property owners would have to take care of, like we do our other lots.
But until then, until it's sold, this SSA, would that include the property and the pond?
No.
Just the pond area?
Just the pond.
Okay.
But again, it goes back to the same old thing, like we're doing now, is the property owner, like every property owner in the village is responsible for cutting their weeds and their grass. This is no different at this current time. But then, once a homeowners association is gone, like we've done with the other ones, and to be honest with you, at one time, we thought that that was the only dry pond we had, and that was clarified, and it's not. So to make it fair to everybody else, that's what everybody else is doing with the homeowners association. That's what we're trying to do with this particular pond, so at the same time.
You had said, are you saying that the, only the properties around the pond would be responsible for maintaining it?
Yeah.
Why would that be? All the entire subdivision pumps water in there.
We decided to address it that way, because these other homes have already been developed or already built, these people are already building them. Just like trying to go back, in all fairness, I was at the hearing where the very first developer, the guy who dug the hole, promised that the businesses would be involved in this, condo association would be involved in this, and all the homes would be on this. He didn't do it. We tried to get the businesses involved, they're saying no. So in all fairness, we can't really get everybody in on this. So the only fair thing to do right now, I think, would just get the vacant property that is butting up against the pond. That's what I would think.
But they have no, the problem is, you're weighing, you're putting the burden on the people that back up to the pond as being responsible for the maintenance of a common ground that they have no legal right to.
But I don't believe we have the legal right to go after, let's say, those two businesses. We tried. Now granted, right now, what we haven't done, and we've talked about this, is right now, there are two new owners for those businesses, and we could go back and ask them again, but we've done that before, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the attorney says, we're dead in the water. So you can't get everybody in on it anyways. So to me, it's more fair.
But the plot of subdivision is where the houses are at.
The 65 lots?
Yeah.
Is where it says the HOA.
That's where that HOA for those houses should be responsible for that property, not the people butting up to it. They're just unfortunate, that's just the lay of the land.
Are we saying the same thing?
No, I'm saying it's all 65. You're going after maybe 15.
65 means the ones that want to ditch too, that feed the pond.
The entire plot of survey.
The entire subdivision. Entire unit three.
Yes. That's, that's where the pond is part of.
Which includes...
You can't do anything with the, with the businesses along Route 1.
Okay, so what about the condos that are there, that should include?
They should also be included in that.
Here's what their attorney said, because I was involved in this. I used to be the president of that association. And our attorney said, if the businesses don't have to pay, neither do we.
Well, then here's the thing.
It says, why are we any different from the businesses if their attorneys, and I'm just saying what they'll say, if their attorneys have determined that there was nothing recorded that forces them to pay for that, then why are we legally required to pay for it if the businesses aren't?
Why is anybody legally responsible for it?
Well, and then that's square one.
I mean, if that's the case, all of the ponds in town should be maintained by the village, and they're not. That's not the way it's set up.
This problem was, nothing was recorded that made them. There was a little fluke there where nothing got recorded to force it.
So if, so if the HOA then takes responsibility for this, and they say, well, you know, we'll be responsible for all the water that's on the property under which we house, and we want to block off all inlets into that dry pond, all of those areas would get flooded. And they have no retention for those areas when they were developed. That includes the businesses and the condos. I mean, your water's going to this retention pond.
Everybody understands, and honestly, the HOA was willing to, until it was determined that the businesses weren't going to. And they says, wait, 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 there's no legal reason for the businesses to. Why is there a legal reason for us to?
You can't legally compel them to contribute to the maintenance of that pond.
But you can also block them off.
No, I don't think we can.
Why? Why?
It's part of our system. Yeah.
They're not maintaining it. They're not, they're not responsible to it. Because if the pond wasn't, here's the thing, if the pond wasn't there, where would their water go? They would have to have a controlled area for their water retention, correct? For those businesses to be there, they needed a retention.
If you block control, that water would flow west and flood the deep below on the west side in the high of the reason.
Hey, I'm, I'm part of the HOA. I don't want that on mine. I mean, that's the problem we're going to have.
Ryan, here's the point, though, is, I don't disagree with you that, what was proposed way back, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago, maybe? What was proposed is what should have been done. The businesses should have been involved, the condos should have been involved, the homes should have been involved. I don't disagree with that whatsoever. The problem is now, is you can't compel the other ones to do it. So how is it fair that they're going to pay nothing, they're going to pay something? On the other kind of, I can see this either way. I see your point. But bottom line is, somebody is going to end up not contributing at that pond, and they should have in the beginning. So the only other thing we could think of is just attack it or approach it with the lots that are actually on that property to begin with. There's no homes there right now. So if they buy the home, they're going to know upfront that they have maintenance of that pond, which we estimated to be how much per home. What do we figure out?
$90 bucks.
$90 bucks.
$90 bucks. $90 bucks. A year, a month. For the 65 lots.
Per month or...
For the...
The 65, not the ones on the edge.
That includes the 5 homes that are built. For the 65, that's what I'm saying. Define what you're saying. There are more lots there, I didn't count them, that are actually not on the pond, but are along a ditch that feeds the pond. Those houses should be included as well. And I don't know if it makes up...
The $90 is the 65 in that area, not around the pond, that entire subdivision.
Ferry crossing south.
Ferry crossing south. That's what it's set up as. That's your $90.
That's it, right?
No, that's the $90 you're talking about.
Are there any homes owning that property? No. Five.
Here's one of the problems too that came up when 705 still owned it, and they came up with it was going to cost something like $20,000 a year to maintain, because they wanted to put up trees and plantings and have flowers. Now you've got the businesses and the HOA saying, we don't even have access to that area. We'd have to walk across somebody's pond. All we care about is if the concrete trough still accepts our water. Beyond that, we don't care what you do with the pond. We don't want it to be a golf course. So that kind of started a fight back then too, because nobody was going to pay to have this beautiful area that only the houses on the pond were going to be able to enjoy. All the rest of them cared about is that their water had somewhere to go.
And to make sure that we're talking about the five houses that we're talking about are on the opposite side of the street, that's, that's okay?
Well, there's, there's... There's, there's three on the north side of that, of Fur. Is it Fur? And there's two or three on the south.
There's some on Forests, too.
Right.
I think there's five or six built. But the bank still has the majority of the votes, so the bank could still make those 65 be an HOA and get it recorded that way.
But the problem you have right now is the, the ones that are sold do not have it recorded against their deed.
That's correct.
So...
It might just be the 60 that are left.
And that's not right.
There's no right, because you've got people that are going to end up not paying anyways they should have paid.
Well, I agree. And that's the question to the businesses. Okay, well, then you need to maintain your rainwater on your property. Where are you going to do that? The gas station can't do it, and the bank won't do it, because the only property they have is right along Route 1. It's of all their best interests to maintain that pond.
But they, they can't be legally compelled to do that. Anybody else want to turn?
I have a question. In your subdivision, in your subdivision, Cleary, do every resident pay for that pond?
We have two ponds, the dry pond and a wet pond. We're responsible for everything.
Everybody pays.
Yes. Regardless of where you're located. Regardless of where you're located.
But in Hunter's Chase subdivision, only the lots around Hunter's Chase Pond pay.
Oh, but hang on. They own into the pond.
They own into the middle.
This one does not.
If your ponds were to overflow, doesn't your water go into that big five-acre pond too?
No.
I believe it does.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. Yes, we went through this before.
No, because it goes...
If yours were to overflow...
If our wet pond goes into the dry pond, the dry pond goes in across and goes into the golf course.
Want me to take you over and show you the pipe that comes out of it?
Yeah, it goes into the five-acre pond.
You should pay too, then.
It would have to be... No, you want to know something? We're below the elevation of their land.
There's no making difference. There is a pipe from your pond to my pond. You know what? We're going to cut you off.
That's fine, because we're going the other way. We're flooding the golf course anyways.
Okay, can I just, just hang on a second? Is anybody else having other things? Because then we'll get adjusted what the direction should be. It's basically an attorney issue. It is, and again, we thought... Bring it up to date here. We thought that dealing with only the vacant lot is going to be the easier way to go, but obviously, maybe not. How many, how many years, Marson, have you been dealing with this? And the, and the attorneys just don't...
My hearing, I would think everyone should, should...
All of them.
Yes, should contribute to this, including your businesses and your townhomes.
I think they all should be responsible.
They should.
They all should be.
But you're not listening to us. The attorney has said you can't compel them to pay. The attorney is telling us, you're dead in the water if they say no. We can certainly ask them. We can certainly go back and, and talk to them. And I, we mentioned that about the two businesses, because it irks me just as much. Like I said, I heard the presentation for myself 10 years ago. And, and he knows it. It irks me that this isn't, this was never done right. That's why they built the damn hole. Darn hole. First. Because the businesses want to be able to drain.
That's right.
That's correct.
It was, and we had that deep V, you know, the whole creek and everything was coming down to this area.
And the HOA even got to a point where they were grudgingly willing to do, to donate to it, until the businesses said no. And they're like, well, what kind of idiots are we if we get involved in it?
Okay. Here's, here's the facts. We're looking at a big expense that the village has to undertake this. The facts are the facts. There was a mistake made somewhere down the line when this all happened. If you can't get, and I think it'd be a waste of money to pay an attorney to try to chase these businesses to contribute. Same thing with the existing HOA of townhomes there, duplexes. They're not legally bound to have to do it. Why would they do it? It would, it's the right thing to do, don't get me wrong. It, it's what's right, and it's what's proper, but if they're not legally bound, no business is going to say, yeah, no problem. I'll give you an extra two grand a month, just because it's what's right. It ain't going to happen. You got 65 homes there in that subdivision that are left that you can now try to fix what was wrong and make an attachment to it to where they have to pay to upkeep it, so that way, as a village, we don't have to. Let's get this in place before it's too late. I see you just go ahead and, and try to get the 65 that you can and those that you can't, that you missed the boat on. Life lesson. Learn from it. You won't repeat your same mistakes. Other than that, considering the bank what's right, whether or not they should contribute or not, I agree, they should, absolutely. But they don't have to.
If it wasn't for that pond, those two businesses wouldn't be there.
Agree 100%. But if they don't legally have to, they're not doing it.
Is the bank willing to put the rest of their lots into a HOA?
Well, that's what we're trying to do right now.
So we're talking 60 lots left that would go into that?
It's our understanding, yeah, but I don't know if we're saying the same language. Certainly, as soon as I figure out which way to north is, then I'll listen. I'm like, dude, I got it. Yeah, so whatever you guys want to do. So you're going to have five homeowners that are going to be contacted now after they bought their home without it?
No, we're saying the rest.
So 65 lots includes the five homes that are occupied right now? I don't know. You go back and say that the five are grandfathered, they got in before the getting was good or something? I don't know. Yeah, we can do that. You, you gotta, you gotta go after what you can and try to fix this, so. Okay, well, bottom line is, we'll keep you informed, because the attorney hasn't come back with a final decision yet, which way to go.
Okay. Village receives inquiry as to whether a domesticated pig can be a pet in the village. We are recently dealt with chickens and now air tests for domesticated pig as a pet has been received. Staff needs some direction here. What animals do we want to allow and not allow as pets in the village? If you allow exotic animals or livestock as pets, do you limit their numbers and the weight? And this is a slippery slope, and that we are opening the door for, just slightly. There will be those that will push the envelope and want to make a point that the owners could enjoy any part, any of their property to be affected. But at the same time, a pet pig may be a, be less obstructive than a wotweiler or a doper. Can a chicken be a pet? Cockatoo? Is there any difference? If the animal is housed inside, do we care? Is the animal itself, or how one cares for the animal contributes to the nuisance situation? We have had these internal discussions, and there does not seem to be any easy answer. It is time to set policy-making on, to weigh in.
We haven't had a problem in the past. You know, we, we allow dogs and cats, right? And that's what our ordinance says. Why would we be any different than that?
Does the ordinance clearly state what the definition of a pet is?
No, that's the problem.
It does not.
I mean, it says no livestock or poultry. Well, is a domesticated pig livestock? The attorney had no legal opinion on that. It's subjective. The attorney is going by the zoning law, I believe. And then when we researched it, it's vague. And then the, the resident is providing information that this animal is not considered livestock. So then we started discussing and saying, okay, with what we've read, is, is this pig any different than a 95-pound dog? And it's not. The pig is trained to go outside, it's on a leash, it's in the house. I can't find, nor do I think anybody else that's doing research on it can't find any sanitary or health reasons why not do it. So the question becomes, is that any different than a dog? Go on to, is something different? Let's say the chicken. And the chickens have come up in the past. But I believe in the past, in both cases, they wanted to raise chicken and have eggs, not a chicken for a pet. So the question then became, is how is a chicken any different than a cockatoo? And my...
I, I, I don't know.
My thought was, and that's why Bob said, let's bring it up for discussion, because he was going to draw up an ordinance, but he said he wants some direction from the board, which I don't blame you for. He writes something which you think would go one way, and that'd be another way. Truthfully, I researched it today, and you go... Truthfully, I researched it today, and you go online, you Google it, and believe it or not, it's, it's what I said. It's not so much the animal, it's what you do with the animal, I think is the problem. Let's look at it a little differently. A, a, um, great day. People don't clean up. People do its thing inside the house. Blah, 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 blah. Is that any different from this pig that does clean up? Again, it's not so much what you do with, you know, it's not so much the animal. It's what you do or you don't do with the animal, I think is the issue.
I, to me livestock means you're raising the animal for human consumption or for breeding. That's livestock, or poultry, but.
You, you have to look back on when the zoning ordinance was created, and what was the intent? And this happened when we look at pools and front yards and its, its perception. This goes down to what were they trying to achieve when they first developed the zoning ordinance? And that was to separate the village area from a farming area. You could say the same thing with pet pigs as an F A, F F A guy who has a cow. He's getting ready to bring down to the Will County Fair, and he is taking care of that animal all day long. He is, and the manure that comes out of that thing, most people put in their gardens anyways. So if that person is maintaining that, is that not a pet? It's not for consumption.
I don't know if he maintains his ground.
First of all, when we say miniature, and I hear a teacup, and I see sixty-five pounds, that's not a teacup.
Sixty-five pound dog is the same thing.
That is not called a teacup.
No, it's called buttercup.
Exactly. And if buttercup's a cow or a pig, it doesn't matter.
We were, we were discussing this. I know, I believe it was homeland I could be, no, I'm wrong. That somebody went to court over a pig. The village lost. Okay, so what I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting anything. My thought would be is that for some, I think more research has to be done before we decide on what to do. If, if there's an inclination saying, yeah, I could allow this provided there's no sanitary and health rea-, you know, sanitary reasons, health reasons, something like that. That, that, that's fine. And then I think there still has to be more research done. We don't wanna do something that we're gonna regret later.
But it, as, as Bob indicated in, in the board packet, it is a slippery slope. Once you go down this path, and you've taken livestock as being an animal that is normally raised on a farm, regardless of what you do with that animal, that is known as livestock. Whether it's for consumption or not, it's livestock. A cockatoo is not livestock.
He says a little bit of the definition of this buttercup or teacup, whatever it is, it's not classified as livestock. Doesn't say that.
Well, you can classify whatever you want, you know?
What do you do if somebody wants a monkey?
Mon-, monkeys would be prohibited.
Why?
Because monkey, I believe, are prohibited by law. State law by law. I don't think it's prohibited by law.
That's true.
That's true.
Need special permits for exotic pets from the USDA.
Yeah. So if I get, hold it, but hold it, hold it. If I get that exotic permit, can I have it in the village? Because it's not livestock.
To be one bet, I'd rather have a monkey than a bull constrictor.
And again, it's not livestock. But if I get, if I get the permit from the federal government, why can I not have it in the village? It's a very slippery slope, and you need to, you need to decide the direction you're gonna go.
Where Brian's going, I think, is there's miniature horses. Are they?
Yeah.
Livestock or are they pets?
They could be pets.
What about, what about a miniature cow? I don't know. First of all, I don't understand why anyone would want ones as pets, but okay. You know, I, I, I.
Believe me.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think it's a good idea either, but when you start discussing this, how is this pet any different? You can call it livestock, whatever you want, but there's bigger dogs. It's what the people didn't do with the dog that causes the problem. Could be the same thing with the pig.
We had the same debate internally. It was a tough one. And do you license these things? Are you gonna sell a pig license then? I don't know. Snoop licenses.
Well, you can.
We don't license cats, so.
And then.
We don't.
And then the discussion went into, and I misinterpreted Brian's interpretation. I don't even know if we can accomplish this. I don't think we should approve. And actually, I think I've changed my mind about this topic, but I was worried about that if we say we can, or you can't, but then the covenants say you can, or you can't, opposite of what we do, that's gonna open up a can of worms. But then Brian indicated.
Well, the village, the village over.
There, there's, there's two ways, and I, and I kinda.
Trying to make it easy is what I was saying.
I've made this interpretation for everybody before. The village ordinances are the base. You can't loosen the village's strength. You can strengthen the requirement though. A covenant can strengthen the requirement over the village. It just can't make the village's requirements loose. So if the village says you can't, you can only have cats and dogs, that's it. And you wanna come in with a cockatoo? Sorry, covenant says you can't have it. The problem is, the village doesn't administer the covenants of the subdivisions. It's the subdivisions' right. The village can't administer that at all. It's not the responsibility. It's not the legality point. The residents have to take that person to court to say they're not allowed to have that. That's the problem. So even if the covenant's clearly said only two cats and two dogs, the village can't stand on that. It's gotta be their own. Even if we say it's okay, and the covenant says you're only gonna have a dog and a cat, but the village says it's okay, it doesn't matter. You're still in that subdivision.
Brian, you provide us. It says in the cover letter here that this is a Prairie Crossing resident that's requesting this pet pig. And we have a covenants here. In your interpretation.
That's the covenants that I gave you out of our, our, yeah.
Right. Would, would this pet pig be allowed or not allowed?
It comes down to the terminology that they left on there, or other bona fide household pets. It leaves it wide open for people with snakes, with fish, with birds, cockatoos, cockatiels, you name it. They aren't gonna go and list out every possible pet that's out there. And honestly, this board, the board approved these covenants before that thing went through.
Livestock and poultry of any kind are prohibited.
Which is involved with where the village is at. You're back to the terminology of livestock. Because if this said nothing about livestock or poultry, and someone wanna have a chicken farm out there, the village doesn't allow it.
Chicken farm.
No, no, no. I'm going down the line of poultry. The village doesn't allow, so you couldn't do it. If someone wanted a chicken, the village doesn't allow you to have poultry. You couldn't do it.
It says, or other bona fide household pets.
The problem is.
What's a bona fide household pet?
And it's all interpretation.
Yeah.
Well, that's as loose as you can get in legal.
That's what we're doing here tonight, Brian, is we're trying to provide interpretation.
That's as loose as you can get on the legal side of the world.
And I know Greg's looking up the definition of livestock.
Oh, I have that.
I have that.
Give the definition of livestock.
You know, the county also has zoning, right? Zoning, there's different zoning groups. You know, there's residential zoning.
Yes.
There's zoning for five acres, ten acres, agricultural zoning, you know? That's for the country, you know? Now, inside the village, we have to, you know, if they want that type of atmosphere of livestock and everything else, they should buy more acreage.
No, they just want a pet. I mean, from what they're saying, they just want a pet.
Apparently they have a daughter or some, or some sibling that's allergic to dogs, but he or she's not allergic to a pig. So they want a pet pig instead of the dog. That's what the letter says. Apparently they're not, you know, she's got allergy to dogs, but not to the pig. This makes them an ideal pet for owners requiring hypoallergenic animal.
Believe it or not, that's what, that's what I found online. Some of this looks like almost the wording came from online.
So if they're allergic to the dog, I guess this is an alternative.
That's why, without direction, you can actually table it. And then I thought of today, when we were doing the research, that there's two outreaches we could do. Number one, we have a vet, well, actually three, we have a vet in town. Number two, we have the Humane Society, and we have the, uh, the other one.
I think you ought to talk to the county also.
Well, the reason we brought this up is we can do all the research we want. Is that gonna change the minds of the board? Where are we as far as allowing this? If it's all sixty saying, oh, we don't wanna do this, fine, that's your right. You don't, we don't need to justify a decision with research. You just have to provide your opinion.
I can see how porky's gonna be.
Yeah. What's the definition of livestock?
Domesticated animals raised in an agricultural setting to produce commodities such as food, fiber, and labor, and they're generally raised for profit.
Agricultural environment.
Pardon?
That's not agricultural environment.
So it's not livestock then?
It's not considered livestock, right? The pig would be allowed. This, this type of pig would be allowed. Remember I said it's not so much.
Yeah, but she said something about livestock.
No, that's the definition of livestock.
This is the definition of it, yeah.
Which is what we're.
We got.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay, couple things. I, I keep hearing sixty-five pounds. Here it says on average, really, in a pig's weight, thirty to fifty pounds, which is smaller than a average Labrador or Golden Retriever. I, I think it's a bizarre request, but if that's what somebody wants, is a pet, and they wanna love it, and snuggle up with a pig on the couch. Not me to say it's right or wrong. My own opinions on it are my own opinions, but as far as what our ordinance says we allow and don't allow, this, to me, looks like something that would fall under, they would be allowed to have it. Now, I do know that there's already one in town. I've pet the thing at a baseball game. It was being walked at Fireman's Park. Like somebody in the audience may have even been at the ball fields that same day. It, you know, you, you, there's been comparisons brought up about chickens. Chickens tend to live in a coop. Outside, all day, all night, make a lot of noise. This pig is gonna be kept inside, treated as a pet. And they're trained to litter box, to go to the bathroom, no different than a cat. Walked on a leash, really no different than a dog. I mean, I personally, you know, I, I, I personally wouldn't have a pig, pet pig, but I don't see why somebody could. By everything I'm seeing here.
Just for the record, the reason why we brought up chickens is because we had the request in the past.
Yeah.
It was the issue of chickens at that time. And then again, we started thinking, well, then how is really a chicken that's kept indoors? You know what I mean? In their own house, how is that any different from, like I say, a big ass, big parrot or a big cockatoo? I, again, you know, now granted, you can go and do the research. Roosters now, why? Cuz they do the cockatoo doo doo thing, you know, that's annoying to the neighbors. But a chicken could be quiet inside a door, no different than a regular bird. And, and I think I was bringing that up, that if we were going to address this, then, so we don't have to do this again and again and again, maybe we should think out of the box and think, could there be other scenarios of pets coming before us that we may have to consider?
You wouldn't want a guinea pig. Those are very lethal birds.
If you don't want to, that's up to you. It's just.
I mean, and, and as far as having, you know, like, I think somebody earlier mentioned that, you know, it's dogs and cats, is what it says, but you know, there's guinea pigs that are pets that not, doesn't have to say you're allowed a guinea pig. There's snakes. There's all different kinds. I mean, people have pet rats, pet mice, ant farms. I mean, where do you stop? I mean.
You can't list them all because there's so many. That's why it's bona fide.
If it's something that, you know, we say no livestock or poultry, right? Again, by definition of livestock, does, you know, we just gotta look at this logically. And our own opinions, whether or not we would have one or not, is our own opinions. But we have to look at it as, we do not allow livestock. What's the definition of livestock? Which Marcy brought up is, you know, bred for food or labor, or, you know, raised in an agricultural setting. These pigs aren't. Wouldn't be considered livestock to be against our ordinance, so. I don't know. I, whatever. That's probably my thoughts.
Have any of the neighbors been consulted on this in the neighborhood?
I don't believe so. I mean, that could be another option. You would allow, you would allow these types of things by.
Contact the neighbors.
By a special permit, then you have to go meet the neighbors, but. Wait, but if, if we're, cuz if you want neighbor's approval, then I think you're, you're looking to do something as a variance or a special zoning, some sort of special permit. My neighbor didn't come and knock on my door when they bought a dog.
And the dog could be worse than this.
I mean, as far as, you know, I, I agree with, I, I understand where Ron's going with contacting neighbors, but they're not applying for any sort of variance or special use. I mean, this is, we have to decide whether or not we think this falls under livestock. If not, could it be considered a pet?
Right, just one quick, Ron, I think so. Whatever we do, if we were to allow this, obviously, I think we would put restrictions on it as far as size, weight, or something like that. Okay, to protect what anybody may be concerned about. It's not that all of a sudden we're to allow this pig. You know what I mean? The pig's gonna have to be conform our standards, which the standard we would get from the pig razors or something. Right?
Yeah, but this is considered like an upscale community, isn't it, that's a big?
Yeah. But what is it?
And next door, it's told me.
What is it?
Someone had a, his neighbor wants a pig.
But that, but again, that's, in, in your opinion, you're thinking that the pig is not an upscale pet, but that's, that's your opinion. Their opinion is, obviously, the standard that wants the pig thinks differently, so we can't go on that.
Yeah, that's how I understand.
And then, and like, like, to Jonathan's point, I think he's right, is I, I don't think, we don't ask our neighbors if we can have a pit bull. And everybody, everybody starts cringing over the pit bulls. Pit bulls by the name is not illegal. It's what the pit bull does. Goes back to my same point. The pig, it's not so much the pig is illegal, it's what they're gonna do with the pig, which is on the, on the premise of the livestock.
The, the pig itself is not a nuisance. It's the behavior of the animal that would be the nuisance. If it misbehaves because the owners aren't treating it right or what have you. If it's left outside, you know, it's, it's the conduct that causes the nuisance, not the.
And, and.
Just emphasize one point of discussion is I, I think we're bringing it up. We're trying to be fair. We're trying to look at it on both sides of the coin. This person wants this pet, which we're sitting there saying, well, wait a minute, how is it any different from this, that, and the other thing? So we're trying to be open minded and fair to this individual that wants to have this pet.
My, my first reaction was, no way, you know?
Wait, pigs fly, right?
Yeah, I said, you know, the individual I was talking to, I, I said it first to him. I said, a pig is a pig is a pig. I don't care if it stands on its hind legs and talks to me, it's still a pig. But when you hear all the arguments about domesticated animals, I, I don't know how a pig would be any different than a dog if it's potty trained. Yeah.
Yeah, it's perception.
It's potty trained. Apparently it goes in the litter in the house. Doesn't even have to go outside. And if this individual bought this pig and never brought it outside, you'd never know they have a pig. So he's doing the right thing by asking the question.
Or we could be all deceived and says, no, that's a dog. It looks like a pig.
I wish somebody knew the difference, really. But we didn't really think about it.
It's on a leash. You're looking at it from a distance.
It's a policy discussion. It's something that the board needs to decide, because I'm sure someone walking a pig down the street is gonna raise some eyebrows. They're gonna ask, is that legal? And our question right now is, our code is absent. In the zoning ordinance, there is no mention of domesticated pig, okay? So it becomes a prohibited use in the zoning ordinance because it's not specifically mentioned. Well, neither is dog, neither is cat, but that's always been assumed. So we need to clean it up. And we did have a municipal ordinance on the books that didn't allow, for reasons of running a charge, didn't allow harboring of livestock or poultry anywhere in the village. And there was some grandfathered instances where they were allowed to have pigeons. And one of them was, I think back, this had pigeons, and there was another place in town. When the ordinance was passed by the board back in the seventies, there were two or three properties that were exempted from that because they had them at the time.
See, a pigeon, how is it any different from any bird? Raising pigeons or a coop of pigeons behind the house.
This, again, the breeding techniques that they have, I don't think back in the seventies, there was a domesticated pig. There was no such thing as a pet pig in the seventies because.
Yes, there was.
Oh, there was.
Was there?
Oh, yeah. My, my boss had a, had a, it was a pot bellied pig in, in Orland. In Orland accepted it. It was in their condo, same thing.
In a condo?
That thing was huge, but it was domesticated.
Okay.
And it, it complied with the village code.
How about if we do this? Can I go around, ask for consensus of whether, if we could dot the I and cross the T? Give us which way you would go, yes or no? So Bob has some direction. And then we would go back, and again, I still think we should do more research to make sure there is no health or sanitary reasons from the Humane Society and the, uh, and our welfare league, and our local vet, and go from there and research it, and then present it depending upon which way this goes tonight. Because we're not gonna decide tonight. All we want is some direction. Okay, so Scott, I'll start with you.
More research.
Okay, but you're willing if we can dot the I and cross the T, just so you know?
Am I willing to?
Yeah, if we can come back with the research and we don't find any negative impact in the research based upon what we said tonight.
I can't answer that right now. I have to look at everything.
All right, Ron?
No.
Yeah, if the.
Okay, if the research.
Yeah. I guess.
If we can limit the size and the nuisance factor, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh.
Brian, honestly, I'm surprised he even came to the village. The ordinance, nothing in our zoning law forbids them. They should just have blocked the thing and said, I have them. You can't help me get rid of it. I'm legal. So whatever you come up with, and it really comes down to the terminology of livestock, and how it's defined legally? I hate to tell you.
You're right, Brian. You can.
They are completely clean on this, and for them coming to, as John's indicated.
They are completely clean on this, and for them coming to, as John's indicated, there evidently is one in town. This person has come to you and said, I wanna make sure before I buy this animal, am I legal? Because your zoning is not really that clear.
That's correct.
But if you turn a blind eye to it, and let's say fifty people in town get a pet pig, you will, no, you, you will hear about it, people will ask, is that legal? And, and you wonder what? And your answer is gonna be. It comes, it comes down, it comes down to the legal terminology in our zoning ordinance of what is defined as livestock. I mean, that's where you're, that's, that's the line you're fighting on. I see a pig as livestock, that's true. One guy can have a pig out on a farm in the side and he's using it to butcher. It's still his pig. If I wanna have him do it in town, no. But it's, it's gonna, and I agree with Marcy, it's gonna come down to how you document the large size. But again, I bought the thing, it wasn't supposed to be bigger than twenty, now it's a big guy. So that's gonna be the other struggle, I mean, that's, they, they go with what they think the size is gonna be, but you can't stop a pig from growing, breeding animals.
This thing even says anything over sixty-nine pounds is considered to be breeding stock, and it does not meet the specifications of this breed, so it's.
You, you'd have to, you'd have to create the limitation.
Okay, we will do the research, and there's one other person we haven't heard from, but not tonight, we'll talk to him. It is our chief of police, who may have a problem with this, with the neighbors and so on and so forth. So those are the people that we will consult, Humane Society, our vet, so on and so forth. See, we've come up with, if I read this correctly, there's four open minded, uh, there's four people that willing to consider it depending on what happens, and there's two definite, no, so bottom it is, we'll go from there.
Didn't we, uh, I know we, we came across vicious dogs, remember we talked about this? Was there an ordinance that we have against vicious dogs?
Yeah, we have it, it's on dogs.
So there, so we limit the, the kind of dog that comes into the village?
We don't limit the, the, the breed or kind of dog, it's just whether they're declared vicious.
It's the kind of.
And there's, there's criteria, and there's behaviors they have to do that we have to document. And it's actually the, the director of Will County Animal Control that would call, declare it vicious or dangerous based on what facts and what evidence we submit to him.
Did one somebody, they have to, most of those are the types of things.
So like, were you thinking of pit bulls? Pit bulls in itself, you can't prohibit a breed, it's gotta be what they do. So like, like the example that I gave before, pit bull has a bad rap, but from what I've learned, it's the way the pit bull was raised. Okay, so you could have a friendly pit bull, but you could have a mean pit bull, just like you could have a mean pot bellied pig. Not a mean pot bellied pig, I, I don't know, I mean. Okay, so, we'll do the research, I think we have some direction?
Yeah, I think if, if, if we head down this path, we probably would propose some kind of ordinance that has restrictions on weight, size, and number, and, uh.
Yeah, but how can you determine that if you've got this little pig? And they're telling you it's a teacup, and all of a sudden it ends up being as big as this table?
Well, then it would be an illegal pig.
Okay, so how are you gonna tell that person he's gotta get rid of?
Okay, by court order, yeah. Just like any other nuisance.
Oh, but this is my, this is my teacup pig.
But the, but the vet or somebody would know. Okay, are you saying that, okay, are you saying the teacup pig becomes overweight? Or are you saying that the tolls of teacup pig is that? In which case we have a vet, or we have a, a firm vet, if they're, if they're called any different, that would come in and tell us, that's not the teacup pet. We would get into a challenge in court, we'd have to take them to court to get a court order and say, hey, you're gone. That's all there's to it, it's no different than anything else that we do that, that, they could come in and say, the darn thing was a dog. That matter.
Yeah.
So they're gonna end up having me.
I think any, any pig, if you feed it, and it keeps eating, it's probably gonna get big and get overweight.
Yeah.
The difference with an overweight teacup pig than a regular pig for breeding is that overweight teacup pig's not moving. It gets so heavy like a cat, you ever see a cat that gets too heavy and it just doesn't move?
Teacup pig becomes part of the duo.
Yeah, I, I.
But I think, I think we should talk to people out in the community too, to get, to get an idea of what, what the community thinks about this as well. Neighborhood.
You know, on campus or your neighborhood, you see it.
Well, no, like I said, this is an upscale.
Talk on members, or you can.
People didn't move out there.
I actually talked to.
For a farm environment.
I talked to a couple of people already, one says, actually, my husband who was raised on a farm says, pigs are farm animals, period that. I talked to two or three other people that said they wouldn't have a problem with it if it wasn't a big old five hundred pound pig in the yard that smelled bad and was wallowing around, but if it was a little teacup pig, they're cute. You know, I talked to one person that says there's a rottweiler nearby that jumps the fence and attacks her dogs. She'd rather have the pig next door than what, than the, the rottweiler that runs loose.
Yeah.
It's kinda, pigs don't farm.
Underneath the fence, they did.
Point out something here, what area in the town is not an upscale part of the community that you would allow this pig? Careful.
George there?
I, I think it's an upscale pig because it's much better than one of those big pigs, so it must be an upscale pig a little.
All right, we have direction, let's go.
I think the other thing I'm looking at is requirements that have kept indoors. That'd be another thing, if something's kept outdoors, that's when you have an.
Well, they should have the right to walk it, they're going to, otherwise you're gonna need to help people keep the dogs.
Housing, housed indoors, kept indoors.
Housed indoors, oh yeah.
Consider a special use permit in the B. Horn district for outdoor seating. Basil restaurant picked at six eighteen O two, PCC, held a public hearing on this request on October twenty-third. They made a formal finding and back the recommendations which will either be provided at the meeting for your review and consideration or provided at the next meeting.
Actually, it was tabled because the PCC wanted him to produce a site plan for their review, and was unable to produce this site plan, so it's on the table.
And let's hope that each one's up within the.
Okay.
That's the only question I meant, during that discussion, you were there, George, it was a comment concerning the quantity of people you can have in the back. Some of the, one person had written, they wanted to discuss, one of the members had said that they were wondering, maybe we should be restricting it to forty-five to thirty, but what was the final agreement? I mean, it wasn't in the original findings by, by our guy from Antaska, but what was the final agreement by the planning and something? Were they gonna add that to it, or what was going on with that?
No, we, we didn't put any limit on it, I mean, it's not gonna hold so many people. And one guy, I think it was one of the neighbors or something, wanted only thirty out there. I, I, you know, if you're gonna run a business, if, if you stuff too many in there, you're gonna hurt your business, so I assume it'll be a reasonable accommodation for, uh, for seating out there, and people can get around.
I just remember that coming up.
Plans would include that though.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I mean, we're looking forward to that, I, I agree, yeah. We, we expect his, his site plan to have how many seats he's gonna have out there.
And we expected.
If it doesn't, we'll be asking them to put it out there.
Well, that's what I noticed came up in that meeting, and it wasn't a trip that ever came out of that.
We were hoping that was gonna come this last thing, being told. That's in our report.
Okay, just to go back to the pond, uh, there's thirty lots. Notice, Brian, I could invite this earlier, appears to be there would be thirty lots back there, if we just go what lots surround the pond? But anyways, okay. Uh, Public Safety trustee.
Yeah, Police Department and enforcement monthly report, uh, included for your review. Uh, Animal Control Program Annual Report for two thousand fourteen is enclosed for your review. Eleven dogs, nineteen cats were brought, brought in by the police department in the past year. Nine dogs, two cats were returned to their owners, one dog and fifteen cats were adopted. No euthanasia was performed in the last year. One dog and two cats remain at the clinic waiting for adoption. So if a resident wishes to adopt one of these animals, please see Dr. McKay. The total cost of the program last year was one thousand four hundred dollars. See the enclosed report.
Had to report Mr. Coolen, there were no pigs on the animal control.
That's the other side.
He's kept the words out of it all.
Animal stories. Okay. Uh, okay, uh, police station expansion update. Chief, you wanna bring us up to date?
We, uh, got all the emergency lighting switched over from what we had to a new energy efficient LED lighting. A lot of the lighting did not work, and it was cheaper to replace the whole unit because the batteries more, more expensive than the unit. But thanks for Public Works for working efficiently and effectively and getting that taken care of. The only thing I'm waiting on now is, uh, the window for our lobby. Uh, the glass person that we've hired to do this, evidently the glass was destroyed in the kiln when they were heating it up. It's tempered glass, so they have to redo it. We're looking at February eleventh, that should be completed. And the only thing left is some housekeeping and some cleaning, um, some more patching and painting, but that's probably gonna wait till next budget here.
Okay. Chief, any other comments?
I have no other comments, it was light for code. Um, Officer Decordi's gonna be finishing or starting up this year and work, he's gonna be, uh, three days a week doing code. So he'll be here at least on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and on some Mondays. So if you have any issues or anything, if you ever sent him an email, we had problems with his computer. He wasn't getting emails, that's corrected now, so he is getting his emails.
So there'll be no enforcement, uh, code enforcement on Sundays?
We, we can, if, if, if we see that there's a problem existing, we will continue with that.
Any other questions of the chief or myself?
Jeff, have you had a chance to work with Zion on the safety of the schools like we've done with the public schools?
Yes, I, uh, reached out to the principal, and I know he was gonna discuss with his board whether he wanted us to perform a school audit similar to what we did with, uh, the other schools. I haven't heard back from him yet.
If they, they, they're going through accreditation over there right now, and they have to put buzzers on the doors. You have to get buzzed in now to the building, which is not before, even on the church side, if you get buzzed in. So they have to put some safety measures in, but I don't think they have the audit.
No, it's just a service we offer, if they want us to do the audit, I mean, it's not as big as, as the other buildings. They do have numbers on their doors, like he said, they've got things locked down, they have cameras now. Um, but we're, we're willing to help if they want our help with anything.
Anyone else? If not, that completes my report.
Great, before you go any further, the number you said was thirty?
All right, I'm quick.
On the pond is fifteen. There's one corner lot is technically not on the pond, you got two corner lots.
Again, are you counting the drainage ditch?
No.
Okay.
It's where the drainage.
Okay. Public Works committee, trustee first.
Water Department Monthly Report is enclosed for your review, along with Sewer Department Monthly Reports. Um, water billing register for the months of November and December, two thousand fourteen are enclosed. Um, note the bill of the pump ratio. We'll get more into that as this report continues. Annual report of water bill to pump for two thousand fourteen is enclosed for review. Um, in two thousand fourteen, these are kind of some staggering numbers, eighteen million more gallons were un-metered compared to two thousand thirteen. This means that in one year's time, the rate of water loss increased by forty.
Forty-nine per day.
Forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifteen gallons per day, um, which is a lot. Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand each and every day is being pumped by our wells, but not being metered. Um, of which we do know, some of that, we are working on getting a list together, I know Buddy. Um, uh, dollar amounts are there for estimated loss. As we continue here with, this kinda carries right into number five, leak detection program update. Um, the entire town has been leak detected by ATS. Um, there was no major leaks found, they found two.
Little one.
Oh, we were, we were minor.
You were there with me, what happened?
Yeah. Um, two minor leaks of which, they've both been addressed, haven't they?
Oh yeah.
Um, the, the difficulty with the leak detection is that copper service lines off a plastic pipe cannot be leak detected um, unless the service line is electrified. Um, that would require, when they go around, as they do leak detection on the mains, they'll go from like hydrant to hydrant and the sound waves that they hear once they hook up to each hydrant or to a valve. Um, the sound waves are recorded in the computer and they can tell if there's a leak. It should be making a certain noise, if it's not, and it's all put in the computer based on the size of the main, what type of main it is, if it's plastic, ductile. Um, now there is a more comprehensive thing they can do, which is where they will go from service line to service line. They would be going from B-box to the valve, and that would tell, they would get numbers and, or not number, waves really is what they're looking at, um, and readings for those individual service lines. Um, I'm not gonna sit here and read this whole thing, but it, that's kind of where we're at now, is we still think there's a leak. I have my own personal feelings where it could possibly be, um, but what we need to do is, I think we need to do more in-depth leak detection and get those service lines tested. Um, basically, what this is telling us is that this leak detection, when they do that, they can't tell us if a service line is sitting there leaking away. Okay, it'll tell us if we have a hole in the water main of a number of roads. Um, this, more in depth, where they actually correlate each individual's service line to tell if it's leaking or not. I think it needs to be done, we're still waiting on a proposal, we've had, asked for a proposal to find out what that would cost. Um, I'd like to concentrate on Nantucket Cove. Um, it was probably, a couple of years ago, we had a meeting, Buddy brought, brought in a piece of.
I brought in this piece of.
Copper pipe that we saw, and, and every, it was sitting in the village hall for a while too, I think every trustee saw it, where we actually saw pitting in the copper, in the brass.
This is the, the valve on the soil that was up there. Um, yeah, they can't do that, well, what we were talking about, I have kind of developed a plan or strategic way, um, going back to old school, it's gonna be very labor, labor intense. Um, what it involves in is basically metering off Nantucket Cove. And I agree with Jonathan, I agree, this problem is up there, but it's hard to isolate this, and we're looking at.
Is that a pitted piece of copper?
Yeah, this is grass, I mean, you don't even see it.
But there's a hole on the top.
Yeah, 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 that was, that was pitted, this was all rotted out, this whole thing. Um, my, my plan is, um, you know, I bought stakes, there, there's two hundred and forty-three B-boxes, main valves, and hydrants in Nantucket Cove. What I need to do is, uh, we're gonna locate every B-box that's there, some of them are buried, they've been run over, they've been crushed, um, buried, it's, it's, like I said, it's gonna be labor intense. Um, I do have, no, like I said, we're going old school, it's like this right here. Um, the water runs through it, I put enough of these connectors on it, I go down to the B-box or on the hydrant or the valve itself, and I, I'll be able to hear if the water is flowing through it, if there's a leak, I'll be able to pick it up with this. It's not a very expensive piece of, of equipment, but as I said, it's gonna be labor intense, I already got the stakes. Uh, um, quite a few of them are already marked from when we did this before. But I want you to know, we also have to, um, I'm gonna have to turn to, um, put a meter in the system and isolate Nantucket Cove. Hopefully, we, you know, by God's graces, you know, we find it and take care of the problem. But like I said, three years ago, I was worried about this, and it's just, the problem has gotten worse. From three years ago, we went from, um, one section to like five different areas, Jonathan, right? The whole block is shut off because of this electricity problem. When, the, the big things that you're looking at there on that that went around is that copper, when, when that's pitting like that, I mean, these, we could have just the tiniest things, you know, leaking away, and there could be multiple. You could have one big one that let go and have a ton that are ready to go. Um, Ron was gonna ask me about like, wouldn't this come up somewhere in a basement or come up from the ground? You know, this thing could be leaking directly into the sanitary, this could be leaking directly into a storm drain. There is on the south.
West corner.
East, south.
West corner is the pond.
There's one in the southwest, there's on the southeast, and that backs up to owner's chase, right there where the road kind of goes around. Um, there's two ponds there that are designed to be dry ponds that are constantly wet.
Yeah.
You, you know, I mean, could this thing be slowly leaking right into a, a storm and running right into those dry ponds that are wet? Um, there's, it's, it's a long fix, I, I think, our, I think everybody's hope was that we'll get leak detection done, we're gonna find a main that's just leaking away and somehow was leaking directly into the creek, which had happened before in years past or something like that. It'd be an easy find, and boom, all of a sudden our gallons come up and our bill of the pump ratio comes right back into place, and, and that's not what's happening, that's not anything's gonna happen. Um, I, I think, as of right now, I mean, there's not much else to report other than that, we're working on it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Isn't there any way of isolating this to find out?
That's what I, that's what I'm gonna try starting to do.
At night, when people aren't using water, and you're seeing these certain wells that are, water is going, you've gotta be able to isolate. These are incidents.
The best that I can do, Gail, is tell you that, you know, I believe it's north of Church Road. I've watched it, um, the increase in a flow, um, in storage tank up, up by the church. And that's, you know, pretty much a direct reflection. The well five, you know, where it would be making up isn't, you know, when they're filling up the towers or the tank, it's under demand or pressure demanding. It would be constant. And I've noticed the increase of water being pushed out at, at all sorts of different times. And what, that's why I said, what we have to do, um, the very first thing I have to do is isolate. You read the meters, you isolate the, the amount of water going into it and then you go back and read the meters. And that's the best place for us to start is right there at the throat of Stonington in Nantucket Cove. It's the most suspect place in the world. I know, um, over the years, those B boxes that were out there, you know, when they, the guy that they were cutting, they just brush hogged them, ran over them. We've had construction equipment out there and it could be just that it snapped off. I mean, you would be surprised. I don't know, Jonathan, if you got the paper that I gave you, that's a, just a pinhole, you know.
The hole boards.
I've given it a couple of times.
I mean, it, it.
Within a month, eleven thousand gallons.
Yeah.
Within a day, three hundred and sixty, just a pinhole.
Yeah.
Just a little larger size and you're instantly up to five, almost five hundred gallons.
But wouldn't you be able to see that on the ground?
Well, you're seriously not having this leaking into a, a storm.
Or a retaining pond.
Yeah, or you know what? It's a labyrinth. This is a farm town. All those are farm fields. It could be a labyrinth of field tiles under their brown land. And, you know, you could never see it. I mean, they go from miles and miles.
Other person's property.
It's a lot of water.
I mean, I talked to the manufacturers, you know, though, you know, there's a couple of things we're gonna have to do as we find these. The manufacturer, they, this, um, we didn't know this was gonna be a problem with the copper and the, um, the brass. They, the only thing they recommend over the years where they've seen this is, you know, we might have to go back and dig some of these up. Thank God, um, there's only forty houses out there right now that are online. So the new, um, developer that would come in and do that property, we would require them to polywrap it. Plus, there's also, um, the discussion right now in the water committee about using, um, poly instead of, um, copper so it wouldn't be attacked by electrolysis. Now, Chicag- the city of Chicago has always been Class K copper. They switched over to poly for a couple of different reasons also. Plus, copper is getting, um, extremely expensive. That's the best I can give you guys. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm putting forth, uh, all, pulling out all the stops. I'm going to a water loss school tomorrow with Donna. I showed Bob the numbers today as to what I thought our un-metered area was and other than not being too sure as to where we're sitting at as far as, um, slow or stopped meters. B box leaks and valve leaks, and I, you know, I, I pretty much can do that. I think we, we accounted for eight billion, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and forty gallons. I mean, which is a big, large amount of un-metered water. That's, that's just the best that I can, and I've been doing this formulas research for the last couple of weeks, trying to, you know, come to a, um, some sort of head with this. And I agree with Bob. I, I, there, there's, there's a leak. The question is, we just gotta find it.
Our total amount of water loss was eighty-three million gallons in two thousand fourteen. With that in perspective, that's eight hundred and thirty elevated tanks full of water.
Also, also remember, and, and because we don't meter a lot that the fire department uses. Back in two thousand and eight, we had twenty-five thousand gallons that we didn't have, we were, it was a difference between pumped and built. That's an eighty-two percent ratio. So we were getting close to where you could get to say, we have a very tight system. After that, started dropping and dropping and dropping. And now, last year, two thousand thirteen, we were at sixty-four percent ratio. That's sixty-five thousand gallons, over sixty-five thousand gallons that we did not have. You get to the next level, or really sixty-five million, you're now, so this year, it's eighty-three million gallons. We're at fifty-eight percent. Now, that doesn't take any, now, this is based on pumped to build. That's based on if all of our meters were reading correctly. We had meters that were wrong. So how really is this? I mean, is it really fifty-eight or is it fifty? Who knows?
The, the only thing I can say, Brian, is our metered water has been pretty constant since oh nine, two thousand ten. The amount metered is about the same. Mount pumped is going up. Okay? So my question is, is it metering? Well, we tested the meter on, on the wells and it's not. But I've also seen runtimes of the wells.
Going up.
Electric use going up, chemical use going up. So it's definitely a leak. It's not.
We're seeing a lot more, as you and I talk, we're seeing a lot more on the north side. Cause those two initially.
Three and five are running more often.
Five is always supposed to be, be used just for pressure control.
And, and it.
And it's running consistently.
Right. It, it's running more than it, than it should. Actually, um, well, three or the booster station should be doing, instead of doing two hundred and twenty or two thirty, uh, a day, it should be like right around eighty-eight or ninety. This is the time of the year we should be able to take the storage tank down and not have to worry about anything. Which, they also have to understand that we're talking about pressure, how we're able to understand where the zones are at. Down at, at, in the middle of town here, there's a pressure gauge and, you know, it reads in with the computer system and it reads the tower pressure. If there was a problem here, well, four would kick on and absorb any pressure spikes that were in that area. By the time, um, the booster station up on the north end of town would react to this, I mean, we would have to have a substantial loss in the tower and, you know, one giant blowout hole like the, like we did. But Penfield blew out before, probably last year a couple of times. And then those pumps would kick on and back it up to bring the system pressure back up. I'm not, I'm not seeing that. What I'm seeing is higher runtimes or more flip flopping and they're, they're reacting to pressure demands on the north end of town. So I, I got a bad.
Problem that we're gonna have with this investigation. But I believe we have thirty B boxes buried under that group pile. In Nantucket Cove. Where they stored the black dirt. I believe it's right over some of those water.
Well, maybe that, the one that I, I've kind of forgot about is like the, the one that backs up the Hunter's Chase. So we had them go in there and raise the level of the ground and, and construction equipment on it.
No, you can still see all those. And where that big dirt pile is?
It's, it's.
Should be away from the B boxes.
Yeah, you can get to the ten boxes.
Yeah, ten feet. But the B boxes, if they're crushed and they're bustled off the top, I can't see what's on.
You know what? We, hold on. We, we, it was two years ago, we used summer help, cause Jim Priddle's the one that did it.
Right.
And we went around and we marked all those, okay? I, I would be willing to bet ninety-five, if not a higher percentage, is still marked there, blue state, ready to go for us. This, this shouldn't be that difficult. The thing is, is we, we gotta get a price as to what this is gonna cost. I mean, we're gonna have Buddy go around and, and do some other testing. But here's the thing too, is when, when they come in and they correlate from B box to B box to B box, Buddy might be able to sit here and put a meter on the water going into that subdivision, check what's being pumped, read people's personal meters, realize that there's, the meters aren't spinning in the houses compared to what's being pumped into that area. And this, that's fine and great. Now we know it's in a subdivision. Where?
Right.
Where? What this advanced leak detection will do, where they correlate it, B box to B box, they will pinpoint within a foot of where it's at. You're digging right there. He's not going on a, on a goose chase looking for a needle in a haystack. Well, I got a leak somewhere in the subdivision, you know, let's get the backhoe and start digging. You know what I mean? It's not.
But you, you could, you could find.
We can.
In those, that there are more than just one culprit. There could be three or four sitting in there that may be together or they may be in different areas. The biggest problem you have is, Nantucket Cove is a very, very corrosive soil. For brass to pit like that, it's very corrosive. And we're talking about us using poly from our service line to the B box. You're still gonna have copper going from that to the houses in the future. And that's gonna be before you get to your meter. So we may need to start thinking about getting into the houses with poly. Especially in that area where you've got a high corrosive environment.
Yeah, those are.
Well, you said.
Those are definitely things.
That's gonna be an issue that we gotta deal with in the future.
You only have forty residents up there. That's why, you know, we brought this, that's what we've been talking about in, in the water and sewer committee. According to manufacturer, we're gonna end up, you're gonna end up having to polywrap these, you know, the, um, B boxes themselves and/or the corporation. And we might have to, you know, find a nut or a bolt or something like that that's rotted off on the mains themselves, um, from the connections. Cause I don't think they were polywrapped either. But that is what, you know, they recommended. That's what needs to be done. And you're right, your odds are you're gonna probably go, uh, poly from the main into.
All the way to the house. Cause if you're having it just on the surface.
Oh, you're gonna have it all.
You're, you're sitting in a fire.
It's gonna find some other place to attack it.
You know, what I don't understand is if you look at these, this graph thing here, since two thousand and twelve, you went from forty-eight up to eighty-three. We have not had any subdivisions built. None, no dirt's been moved.
Mm-hmm.
How did that increase that much?
Corrosion.
Corrosion.
Corrosion. There's no movement. You, you could have, you could have perfect soil.
But how do you know it's corrosion?
When you look at that brass?
That one, yes, but I'm saying.
But that's what comes out of that property. That's what comes out of that area. You should, this brass should be.
We fixed six of them more than like that.
Okay, it, that, that's been a kind of a problem in that area. Um, I think with what you're going for, the, the answer that you're looking for is, yeah, it's a staggering number. There's a big difference. We noticed it. That's why we've incorporated leak detection. That's why we've worked on valve turning, which is things that will, you'll identify valve leaks at that point. These are all things that, that we've been trying over the past couple of years. Unfort- this, this is a very unfortunate circumstance with this ATS. I was in a pre-con meeting with this company on August twenty-ninth. That's how long this has been going on. Should it take that long? Absolutely not. Am I happy with the company? Absolutely not. Simpson, in the past, when we've had Simpson do leak detection, the turnaround and the results and the reports have gotten back to us a lot faster. Is this a problem that's been going on for a couple of years and we've seen it increasing and becoming a larger problem? Yes, absolutely. That's why we've taken the steps we've taken and we have done leak detection. Last time we did leak detection with Simpson, we found eight leaks. This time, two more leaks were found. We constantly have water main breaks. I mean, these are things that we need to discuss and are, you know, they're kind of brought up in a fight of your financial plan and, you know, obviously they're gonna come up at budget times every year. I, I, I don't know what to say to you, Gail. I, I understand completely what you're saying. The numbers are there.
But somebody who's got that at their house. You can't tell me that that person's not calling the villagers, they, I have no water.
The problem is, it's not at somebody's house. It's in, it's in the unbilled areas. They're, they're set for buildings.
Yeah, but you're saying in the subdivision, that's happening.
In the subdivision, in the empty, in the, in the empty lots.
So why would it not have, be happening in the guy who lives next door to that?
Depends on how corrosive out the land is. It could be in the area where it's the best part of the land and it's corrosive on the south side.
We don't know. You know, we don't know that there is a homeowner there that's, you know, service line is completely pitted like that and ready to go any second. We don't know. What we do know is that the leaks that have been detected there in the past, over the last two years and that have been found by just water coming up to surface and have been fixed. This is what we're finding when we dig it up and find it. Do we know for sure that it, it's all over? Could it be in one condensed area within that subdivision, the soil that's making it to this? I mean, there's a million different possibilities. We don't know. We gotta do more. We gotta figure out this leak detection thing. This is why, you know, as, as Buddy started to get to, and it's the next item on the agenda is, you know, tomorrow, himself and Donna Rooney will be attending a water loss, um, training seminar. I, I mean, we're doing what we can to, to try to fix this. This is, I, I believe this is probably our, our biggest issue within the village operation wise. And it's something that needs to be addressed and it's something that we gotta continually work at.
But do we have people in that area, in those areas that are complaining? They only have pressure in there?
No, no, we have not received any complaints.
Well, the pressure's not the problem. The pressure, all that's gonna happen is, the water's gonna get out, but the pressure's still gonna keep coming through because the pumps are running more. They're just trying to maintain pressure.
So there's no dirt or anything that can get into those lines?
No, cause this is pressurized. It's pressurized if anything is gonna keep going up.
I'm not sure, but I think we're missing the point. It's all the house, all the pipes in town that have houses on them have been tested. It's the lots that are out there that has those lines and those have not been tested, the service lines. That's what we're trying to accomplish. Right now, we're getting down to almost where we're ruling almost everything out. And this is one more thing, that it's the vacant lots where that water could be running and nobody's there seeing it. It could not be coming to the service.
If you're on the earth.
We do have a flow of water yet that we keep blaming as groundwater, pine lane, over there. There is still water flowing there and we're blaming it on groundwater. I still say, Bob still says, that it could be, that's our water. We just can't find the leak yet.
And the problem with all that stuff is.
The point is that it, it just so happened that this class came up, I'm even thinking in the back of my mind, somewhere, and I doubt it, that we, we have some type of computing error. I doubt it, but that's why when this class came up, maybe they'll come up with another idea we haven't thought of. So as Jonathan is trying to express, we're doing everything we can and we agree. Staggering, this is not acceptable. We've gotta find what's wrong. And I think we're taking every effort.
Yeah. You talk about the pressure. If I was on the other end of that pipe.
Yeah.
I'd have low water pressure. Okay?
Yeah, I would think you would.
But there's nobody on the other ends of those pipes. They're all dead end. They're stowed.
Gotcha.
Yet to the vacant line. Now, if there was a resident on that pipe, they would report low water pressure and we would.
But they would, they would still have water.
The pressure would just be low.
They'd have low pressure, yeah.
Round three or something.
No, I was just wondering. You just can't shut Montebalvo down.
We are going to. You can't, you can't just, yeah, you can't, in order for me to do it, I need to shut it down, probably for an hour.
Yeah.
You know, um, go read the meter, shut it down. It, it, it's just, it's a process. It's basically, um, developed from old school. I mean, I'm going back to old, old school technology on doing this.
Yeah.
You know, to, and like I said, it's gonna be a little labor intense. Jonathan's right. We, I had Jim Priddle. You know, he marked out the south side ones, but there's still prob- there's, there's probably a hundred and something that, you know, empty lot B boxes.
To answer your question, the answer is that's been a discussion, but I think we all should hesitate before we knock off sixty-five people without water, even though it's gonna be the middle of the night.
Right.
So it's be, if that was discussed, the possibility of isolating it there.
All right. Next item, uh, as I just stated, superintendent and utility building technician to attend water loss training. Number seven, village meets with building owner, six eighteen Gould Street to discuss water demand and need for service into this building. This building is undergoing a change of use from office space to a restaurant, hopefully. And it's been determined that the existing service line will not be able to handle the load. The village met with the owner of the building, um, came to a fair agreement on how to supply adequate water to this building. It was agreed that the village would supply some of the material, charge a tap-in fee of fifteen hundred dollars and the building owner will have to hire a plumber, um, to install the line. All parties agreed. There's a copy of the letter that was sent to the owner after our meeting. John here, backhoe update. Superintendent brought to the committee's attention, um, a couple of months ago, that what we were looking at, the backhoe needs approximately eleven thousand dollars in repairs. The rear deferential is leaking, um, which would require the rear axle to be pulled. We met on December eighth. We weighed several options. We looked at leasing machine, lease purchase, purchase with cash versus, versus repairing the existing machine. We came to the conclusion that we think the most cost-effective option is to repair the tractor that we currently have, based on the amount of hours that have, that have been used on it and how long it should last. The, the machine will be out of order for a while. Um, we have arrangements where we will have access if needed for an emergency. The administrator was directed to find funds to, um, in the existing budget to cover the cost. Buddy, you wanna give us an update on the repairs?
I have held off doing that because we've had a couple of leaks in the system and I've been, we've still been able to use the backhoe. I have one more thing to dig. You know, it looks like it's gonna be going into the shop to be repaired within the next two weeks and it will be gone for a week. You know, and I made arrangements with, um, the township supervisor that they would, um, back us up with an operator and their backhoe if, um, we need it.
The highway supervisor.
Highway supervisor. Michael Bolterman?
The new two thousand and fourteen pickup placed in the service. This replaces a two thousand and four water service truck. Um, it's been designated to Floyd. Toolbox sides will be added to the truck in the future. More ten military surpluses, we get redundant military surplus tools obtained from the military in Fort Riley, Kansas. We all just paid a bill for that, so we all know that's going on. Consider a proposal from H R Green in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to engineer draft bid specification, let bids and construction observation for the Fairway Drive lube resurfacing project. Seventy thousand dollars has been budgeted for this project, um, since we're gonna go a little further and conduct more depth patching with this project. This is something that we approve.
Um, this is something that we approved in an emergency status that wasn't able to get done. It's no longer an emergency, and this is what we have to do, um, to appropriately do that. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve a proposal from H R Green in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars to engineer draft bid specifications, let bids, and construction observation for the Fairway Drive Loop Resurfacing Project.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There was a second. Any questions in the motion?
Just one, you wanna add the Cardinal Creek Boulevard patch to that, sounds like cool.
But that would come out of the escrow.
That'd be an escrow project, but we could add to this and do both. Yeah, if you're gonna have the engineers and, you know.
If there's a benefit to the contract, we'll bring it back to the board. I think we should probably do that.
You're gonna need to make sure you, the engineering and all the observation is allocated and documented separately so that we can, we have full separation.
We've done that before with H R Green. Um, yeah, and, and this is just, it just kinda goes along with the, what this committee's been trying to do. Um, you know, this is something we need to get on now. This is something that I know H R Green said they could have ready. Um, and, and just like our last road resurfacing project, I mean, let's get them fighting for the first work of the year rather than wait until summertime, so that's why we're dealing with this in the winter.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Is the Sunset Cove issue included in this motion, or is that something that's separate?
I, I, I'm in my little group now. If Janet agrees.
Yeah.
Okay, Cleary?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Proctor's?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
And you said so to Seth Cole, just to be clarifying, it is Cardinal Creek at Sunset Cove.
Mm-hmm. And it's gonna be a separate bid because I gotta keep everyone-
Especially if it's on Sunset Cove, it's on the Cardinal Creek.
It's on Cardinal Creek, yeah.
Yes, at Sunset Cove.
John, what we need to do is we need to go out there and determine the scope of H R. Okay? Okay, we can do that.
Hold the job up.
Sure. Um, and then just one last thing, I wanted to kinda ask the board's opinion. Um, we have a health works committee meeting on, what is it, the-
February ninth.
February ninth, that's after our next meeting. Um, whenever one looked at their five-year plan, there was one thing that was kinda, the water fund is one thing that really caught my attention. Um, and I kinda wanted the board's opinion. We've, we went over this at the survey. I know we've talked about different things as far as if we wanna pursue a referendum for a sales tax or whatever, but the numbers that are in here and, and what we got going into water replacement account is just not enough. We've had our auditors sit here and tell us that we're undercharging for water. We've had studies done throughout the south suburbs from the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association where it was a study of, I think it was thirteen communities. We were the second lowest. And like I said, we flat out last, when was our audit here, October?
Mm-hmm.
Sat here and said, you are undercharging for water. Does the board wish for us to look at more than the ten cent rate increase at our next meeting where we could kinda pull up some numbers and say if we did a quarter increase, or if we did a fifty cent increase, or if we did a dollar increase, these are the numbers that would be generated and can go towards water main replacement. Because forty thousand dollars into a water main replacement account is not enough per year. We're kicking the can down the road and somewhere sooner or later, we gotta come up with funds. And we got the funds to do a big project like Penfield Street, which is the number one thing, but that ties our hands for thirty years. So I just, I can add it to the agenda and bring back some numbers if, if the board's interested. If the board's not willing to, um, raise rates, then we'll let it be at the time.
You can give it an idea.
If each dime generates by eleven thousand seven hundred dollars more. So you're not looking at a lot of money on a dime.
How long does this dime go? I mean, I know we passed ordinances that it goes for a certain period of time.
Right now, each rate, the water and sewer rate goes up by a dime every year. And that covers our increased operating costs.
That follows, that follows our fiscal year.
Right. It, it's actually going down percentage-wise every year. Most communities do a flat percentage. We decided when we passed that order, it's just do a dime. It's easier, it's going to a resident. Your rates go up a dime every year to pay for increased operating costs. What John's talking about is going above and beyond the dollar a month, I think we're charging for water main replacements right now. And the committee thought it would be better to do it on volume and not on a flat charge. Because flat charges penalize your low water usage. We talked about it before, and, yeah, we talked about it before, and I was like, well, you could do like a flat charge, like a sewer debt charge. And that money goes directly into, um, would go directly into water main replacement account. My personal belief is, end user pays for it. If, if there's a minimum usage, um, resident out there and then somebody who's using forty thousand gallons a month, or twenty-five thousand gallons a month, then they shouldn't both pay the same amount. That person that's using three times as much, it should be the end user paying it, which would just go into, do you then just increase the dollars per thousand that we charge currently for water? Right now, it only gets a minimum bill, eight thousand gallons. Your sewer and water is based on per thousand, above and beyond the minimum. Do you just increase that amount to try to generate some more revenue for water main replacement? I don't know, I, I knew what we were looking at and everything when we did and began phase one and everything with the water main replacement for Penfield, but when you look at that and you really think about it, forty thousand dollars a year is just, it's not enough. So, we, you know, we've talked to sales tax referendum, we've talked rate increases, but somewhere sooner or later, we gotta realize we need more revenue. Our auditors have flat out sat here. I mean, it was like, they didn't have many comments for us other than the biggest one, you guys are undercharging for water. We had the South Suburban Mayors and Managers study that we gave our numbers to, showed us, we're second lowest out of like thirteen or fifteen communities, however many communities participated in that study.
I'd be curious to see those numbers, if you might, and I would be willing to look at your other numbers to, like what it would bring in, but I'd kinda be curious to see the comparison of what we are with the other community.
Rate study? Yeah, we, we, we have. I mean, it was part of a pack. I mean, I just, I don't wanna waste a ton of time on my own figuring out all these numbers and everything if the board is adamantly against the increasing rates, but I mean, I think it's something we need to look at.
I can make a suggestion. At your next meeting, you got a, a lot on your plate. In the meantime, we'll get your material out, and then at another meeting after that, maybe you should, then discuss with me.
That's fine, yeah, you should do it under two separate meetings. I just didn't wanna spend all my time on, I mean, I could throw someone in there out of the wild.
Well, the problem you're gonna have is we have our, we have our public works meeting at night.
Yeah.
Which is where he wants to discuss this.
I'll suggest, there's a lot, there's no reason why we have to do it today, or even at tonight. You can do it on March ninth rather than February ninth.
It's gonna affect the, would that affect budgeting, or just five years?
It depends whatever you do.
Yeah, depending on if you did it.
Whatever you do, the rating seems that's what you do. I just hope.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't, don't forget, John, though, the half point sales tax that we have in our good pockets is for the sewer plant. Yes. If we use it for water, then we're gonna have to find another revenue source for the sewer plant. All right. Uh, yeah, whether it's a waste of time or not, I'm gonna put some numbers together and hopefully I'll have something for everyone at the night.
I was gonna say, you're asking somebody cold, but I think they wanna look at everything before they, so I, unfortunately, could you be wasting your time?
Yes.
Yeah, but, tough.
And then my report. I, I, one, one thing that came to my mind is we are spending some of that Cardinal Creek, twelve escrow money for the benefit of the public. Uh, we did correspond with the president, H O A, the Cardinal Creek Homeowners Association, on their request for sixty-six thousand dollars, you remember that? And an offer was made by their attorney to indemnify the village if we gave them sixty-six thousand without any strings attached. And our attorney was comfortable with that, okay? You indemnify us, here's a check for sixty-six grand, do what you gotta do up there. Uh, to date, we have not received that indemnity agreement from that attorney. And this has been going on for months, so I emailed, uh, the president of the Cardinal Creek H O A and said, look, you know, we're already willing and able to give you a check for sixty-six thousand, produce your indemnity. And she said, yeah, we're, we're working on our attorney to get that done.
So bottom line, the point is it is back in their court.
Yeah, and we will set aside the sixty-six thousand, we won't spend it. Okay?
Which is one of the reasons why we said we should probably get extra.
Yes. That's about the last thing that I noticed.
Anything else?
No, no, that's it.
I could have development, trust me, man.
Bernard Welding, update. After the rejection of the offer by the landowner, Bernard was entertaining a counter offer. This is the last we've heard on the project, and the ball is in Bernard's court if they choose to proceed. Spring newsletter is around the corner. During the strategic planning process, the board agreed that the newsletter needed more pertinent information to keep it relevant. Staff proposes focusing on the land use plan process and an effort to engage citizens. Is there any other topic the board wants addressed, and is there enough news for a village president's corner? I always think there's enough news for a public's corner.
But I don't, I'm surprised that that's even a question.
Well, you asked me to put that in, because you were looking, like you asked, because you were looking for input from the board numbers and see what rumors they have, whether they need to be squashed.
I've heard rumors that I need to squash. I don't know, yes, it should be in.
I think that was the best, the oldest thing on there.
Oh, yeah.
And even if it's things that we know the answers to, that seem old, the public doesn't know, and I mean, there's always information to be given.
And before you go on to the next, if in fact we decide to do the village website presentation, we can do after we come back from our executive session. It's already quarter of nine, we may consider doing this on the night.
That would be fine.
So if you wanna go ahead and say something, I'll let go.
You know, if he wants to table it, you know.
No, I'm leaving it up to the board, and I'm just saying it's already quarter of nine, we're not in executive session yet, so.
How long is the presentation?
About a month. How many questions you'd ask it? If there's a lot of information on there, I was gonna show you, so.
Maybe we could do it.
If it's up to the board, if they wanna stay, they can stay, but that's do it after the executive.
Do you wanna stay, or should we do that next time?
Whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. Whatever you wanna do.
You wanna hang, I can hang.
Let's do it tonight.
After executive session.
Pardon?
After the executive session.
Okay. So we will have a village website presentation after our executive session. And that ends my report at the moment.
Okay, believe it or not, as of last Friday, I believe it was, we did talk to the prospective buyers of the Boeing Alley Buddies and associated vacant properties, and apparently that still is a negotiation. We have heard nothing more about the golf course. Uh, except that we know for a fact that they are getting bids to tear down the two buildings that are dilapidated up front. Governor Rauner, I wish I could tell you everything. Everything is on hold. Uh, I'm sure you've been reading the papers as far as the Iliana. Uh, what I'm finding hard to believe, I don't understand why there is nothing, or at least that I have seen about the airport as far as them stopping and proceeding with that. Press seemed to just jump on in the Iliana Expressway. Uh, we've heard nothing more than that. Governor Rauner wasn't even done with his speech, and we received an email that they were threatening to take away our L G D F again. But I personally feel that that was jumping the gun. I have not seen anything. And as Bob pointed out, the lieutenant governor came from a municipality, so she is very, very much aware of what the L G D F is. And I find it hard to believe that she wouldn't advise Governor Rauner what her dealings or her experiences with that. So once again, it's a, it's back on the table, but we don't know how, and I, I personally think they jumped the gun because I haven't heard any more about it since that date. And like I said, he wasn't involved, I got the email. That's all I had. Can't think of anything else. Bob?
Yeah, the one thing that ties into that is we can ask by the government, we can provide them with, obviously, initiatives in the next two weeks. We don't have another board meeting, uh, in the next two weeks where we discuss issues of the building bills and commission reports. And the one thing that I thought we should ask for is deregulation of the dispense of more fuel tax funds. I think it's ridiculous what we have to go through to spend that money. It's a bureaucratic boondoggle. It's our money anyway, from the gas tax. I don't see why we have to go through state bureaucracy to get approvals on spending that money. They should allow us to put it in the street fund and have our auditors verify that we spent it on street expenses instead of going through all those resolutions and audits and everything that I got lenses through. And Mayor, I think you have one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you pour that out now?
No. I was gonna let you bring that up.
Thanks. Uh, we also suggested that possibly for home rule communities, there is a law that's called criminal housing management. Uh, basically, it, it's, makes rental property businesses, so the, the landlords that don't take care of their property, there's things that we can do for that, and then there has, so in other words, renters has, uh, I don't wanna call them property rights, but the landlord is able to take care of the building by inspections and so on and so forth. The rental properties actually become business. The landlord then also has tools to evict, screen, or whatever the case may be, the renters, so they don't rent to the wrong people, if there is such a thing. And bottom line is, non-home rule communities can have that, I'm sorry, home rule communities can have that, non-home rule communities cannot.
So it's a crime-free rental housing?
Crime-free resident, residence housing, for instance. And the towns that have had it, I believe, have had quite successfully. Obvious, even if they gave us the power to do it, it's something that still we would have to investigate up before the board, but we can't adapt it anyways because we're not home rule. So, just want to hammer up.
Since it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on it, but we can go around and get a consensus, and then Mayor can draft a letter. So we have two issues on the table, deregulation of M F T and crime-free rental housing. On the table, both? Is one or are on the table each? Yeah?
Yeah, both of them.
Same, right?
Both of them.
Yeah?
Yep.
Both of them.
Yeah? Crime?
I'm finding both, but the rental housing, I mean, if you're, if you're the owner of the property, you can do whatever investigating you want before anybody gets in. You don't need a village organs to do that.
It has to.
You just can't evict, is the restriction.
Gives more rights to the rental property to be able to screen his renters. And final.
Diane?
Any other new business to go to the board? We have a motion to adjourn it to executive session, but it's discussed employee compensation. Some move?
Okay.
Motion on the floor in a second, and I will call.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes, Aaron.
Yes. Staff can stay.